So we should.
So we have a meeting starting eight o'clock Friday, April twenty eighth. Commissioner Chang has joined us and I see a count of fifteen in the meeting right now, so we can get started. Are you gonna roll with it, Whitney?
Thanks, Commissioner DeBonne. I'll go ahead and get us started and then we can certainly pause if Doug joins. Here in a little bit. This week's bill report, there's not a lot of new bills for the board's attention, but there are a few. So the first bill that we wanted to flag, just to affirm the board's priority and position, is on page nine of the report. And this is Senate Bill eight forty seven. The board has not formally taken a position on this bill, but it looks like, and I see Doug is in the waiting room, so I'm gonna probably pause here in a minute. Due to the letter that staff coordinated with the board on this week, we were proposing a priority to support with amendments for that bill, but wanted to confirm with the board that that's what you'd like to see reflected in the report.
Okay, well, good morning, Doug. We were just talking about Senate Bill eight forty seven, which we sent a letter asking for some changes. And we haven't taken a position on it.
Yeah, I would point out that that bill got sent to Ways and Means that very seldom amends bills, so we can ask for, we can ask the committee for an amendment, but it's unlikely that they'll amend the language of the bill at this point. And then that would go straight to the floor if it's approved by what it means. It's a fairly large omnibus housing amendment that Senator Jama has been working on for months. So it doesn't hurt to ask. Maybe we can get some, some report language in the report, but unlikely to be amended in any significant way, but still good to ask.
Great, that's good to understand. So then Commissioner Chang, are you supportive of this bill as written or amended? Because that would be the concept, I guess, at this time. Even if we take and ask for amendments, it may not happen, but that could be our position.
I'm not familiar enough with the bill to say I'm supportive as, as written. I, you know, I, I think our real interest is getting near in resource lands added. So Doug, I wanted to ask, are there any crossover legislators, you know, key legislators who are involved in it? You know, sponsors of this bill who also sit on Ways and Means? Who we could talk to?
That's a good question. Let me just pull up the sponsorship list. I mean, the, this is a bill that started out as a, a very broad comprehensive housing bill with an awful lot of ideas mainly coming out of Portland. I know League of Cities and AOC worked extensively with this sponsor on the bill and the Anne Gross version is significantly different, but the, even on the gross bill, the only, the main sponsor is still only Senator Jama. But I know Casey well and I'd be happy to chat with him about it.
Yeah.
So just for our bill list, maybe taking a monitor position, knowing that we have written a letter asking for an amendment. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I, I just jump in and say, it, it does do some good things, among which is allowing local governments a little additional flexibility. So as I said, LOC and AOC worked with the sponsor too. It was pretty broad and, and unfocused at the beginning, and I haven't read the whole gross bill because it just passed a couple of days ago. But I'll go back and read that over the weekend.
The other thing I'd ask Doug is, we just had our Board of Commissioners meeting canceled for Wednesday. Is there, would there be any value in coming over on Wednesday to talk to people about this? Or is it going to be another day when, you know, everything, you know, it's, it's, it's floor activity all day? All the time? Sorry, you're on, still on mute.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Yeah, Monday and Tuesday are floor action all day. I expect the, the House to go late into the night. The Senate probably will, will finish about six or seven o'clock on both days. And what that means is that Wednesday will be chock full of committee hearing rooms and very difficult to get meetings on. So I, I'd say, give me an opportunity to poke around with Ways and Means staff on this on Monday, Tuesday, and I can send you an update by, by Tuesday morning on what their plan is, where it would go. I mean, there is a fiscal attached to this bill, which is, is not, as I recall, was fairly high early on, so let me just take a look at that. So it's, yeah. Fiscal impact statement. I'll have to look, look for that. I, I don't have that up right now. But it, it's one of the things that I think will be dependent on what happens on May eighteenth with revenue forecast. Is it up? Is it down sideways? A, a lot of these bills that cost money are going to be reliant on that, that revenue statement.
So how about a position of two monitor at this time?
Sounds great.
Just so it stays on our list, we need to know what's going on.
I guess the, the one last, one last question for Doug would be, are there any other vehicles to accomplish what we're, we're hoping to accomplish here? That you're aware of?
Commissioner, that's a very good question. There are, there are some vehicles that have moved from the House to the Senate, the Senate and House. An awful lot of them, though, did go down to Ways and Means, so let me go back and take a look at our list and see if there's another opportunity to do something like we're asking for here.
Thank you.
Great. So Commissioner Chang, you support that two-monitor position?
I, I mean, I, I'll be doing what I can to be a, a, you know, a little bit more active than monitor, but you know, it, it all depends on what I, what opportunities Doug is able to actually identify for us.
Yeah. But for this bill and its current form, as I say, I haven't done the deep, you know, research on it either, so we don't know what we'd be signing up for. So for our bill list, two-monitor, it sounds like it'd be the place to keep it. So we're, we're keeping an eye on it.
Sure, we could, we could do that. Or, I mean, if our goal is an amendment, then we could, we could say support with amendment as well. But monitor is fine.
Doesn't today, okay.
Doesn't change what, what I'll be doing.
Yep, that's fine.
Perfect. Before we continue on with the bill report, Doug, I'm happy to pause if you have an update sort of more broadly or can proceed on with the bill report, whatever your preference.
Yeah, I can give a, a quick overview and update. We have about six weeks left. Hard to believe that we're well past the halfway point. The, today is a, a day of travel for a lot of legislators. Always Means Committee is heading over to Ontario. It was, it was pretty entertaining to watch some of the Ways Means Committee members complain about how long they would have to drive to get there. I, I had a conversation with Senator Finley, who lives in Ontario, who's got a kick out of that since he drives to Ontario and back at least once a week. But nonetheless, they'll be out in Ontario. They have scheduled a, a fifth opportunity for folks to testify remotely on any budget priorities. That will be next Wednesday. I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. It might be an opportunity to sign up and testify in support of the, the capital construction request for the courthouse. So I'll send the link this morning for signing up. No guarantee that anyone will be allowed to testify, but they, I think they will prioritize local officials, so that's, that's next week. The, a, a big issue is going to come up Monday and Tuesday, and that's why they've canceled committee hearings, and that's two bills, House Bill two thousand two, which is the abortion and gender identification bill. And then the other bills, House Bill two thousand five, and that's, that's the gun bill. Those bills are expected to take all day, both days. And, you know, stay tuned for some fireworks. I think, you know, the no amendments were allowed in the committee on either of those bills. I think there's great unhappiness on one side of the aisle and expect them to be, there to be long debates and parliamentary moves, et cetera. These are the two most controversial bills of the session, so I would expect that we'll get those out of the way and then hopefully the hopefully smooth sailing from, from now on. The biggest, the big thing for us is Senate Bill six forty four passed the House unanimously on Thursday. Now it's the governor, so congratulations. We've got our number one priority bill headed to the governor ahead of whatever chaos might occur. That was my goal, is to get the bill out, you know, before, you know, the last few weeks of the session, because you never know what's going to happen. So I was very pleased about that. The, we had to battle some last-minute proposals for potential amendments, reducing the lot size or making other changes to the bill. We successfully fended those off, kept the bill as is through the Senate, which is a good thing because that eliminates an extra step. So that's good news. Delegation is busy. I don't know if people will jump on today or not, but if they do, we'll say hello, but there, a lot of them are busy with revenue or finance, judiciary. Certainly the Ways and Means process as well, so. Quick update. It, the Capitol's been pretty busy the last few days with, with lobby days and lobby folks in the building, in the hallway, not really a building, just in, in the single hallway. Makes it kind of crowded, but it was nice out sun and no rain for a few days.
Hmm, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move through to the next flagged bills on this week's report, which is community development on page eleven. There are two bills at the top of that page that Peter had sent a summary email to the board on last week, but we didn't quite have time for discussion, and these are still pending in draft status without board review. So Peter, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you. Peter, you're on mute?
How about now? All right. It was set to, the, the host was continually muting me. It must have been a default setting. So the first is House Bill twenty-five sixteen. This is in regards to the potential for marijuana production, cannabis tourism. It would function similar to wine tasting at a winery. I did not have time this week to track it. It's in, last time I checked, it was in Ways and Means. It looks like it still may be there. I suspect this bill is going to die because of the fiscal impacts that OLCC has identified, among others, of the cost to administer the totality of the bill. But more than anything, it, it slipped through our, I, I was made aware of it last week. And obviously it's land use related. So I, I don't think it makes sense to go into much more detail in light of the fiscal implications and the volatility or the sensitivity of the state's budget, but Doug, I don't know if you have other, other perspectives on this, but I, more than anything, I just wanted to let the county commission know that there is a cannabis-related land use that's still technically active.
Yeah, Peter, the, the bill is Always Means, you're right, and the fiscal is about a million dollars in the biennium, biennial cost, although there was some testimony in the record during the hearing that I looked at, that that might be a, a low estimate because that is only a state cost and county costs and law enforcement costs might be higher. So I, those issues were raised at the committee, and this is one of the many several hundred bills that are sitting out Always Means waiting on the revenue forecast. So I will poke around a little bit this next week and see, see if I get any clarification on where that might be or, or whether or not that might move.
Okay. Any other questions about twenty-five, twenty-five sixteen?
So I'd maybe just leave it where it is, you know, if it moves or if it gets activity, we might research it more. Any thoughts, Commissioner Chang?
I, I think we should oppose it, but I, I mean, maybe oppose, but we don't have to put too much effort into it right now if we're not sure if it's going to move or not, but what I said last week when, when, when Peter raised this for us was that we heard about this at AOC, that AOC Legislative Committee. We already have a process in Deschutes County and other counties to, to permit retail facilities. And this seems like a kind of effort to do a back, you know, a backdoor approach to expanding commercial, you know, expanding commercial retail facilities for cannabis. And I, you know, the voters of Deschutes County have spoken pretty loud and clear about that.
So that's fine, opposed position with the, I support that also with the information that we know, because it may not go anywhere anyways.
I'd just throw in one other little tidbit of information on this bill. So this is a bill that was, that had a hearing the first week of the session, as I recall, and then it disappeared. And so I think everybody was assuming it was dead. And it appeared, reappeared in the committee schedule with very limited notice for a work session among a very long list of bills. So that's, there, there was a little, and that's why some of the voters on the committee did so, because they were, they were concerned about the process. So I, I tend to agree with, with the commissioners. I think this, this is more controversial than it appears on, on its surface.
Okay, definitely keep an eye on it if it starts to move or gets supported.
Okay, the second bill that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, this was also in an email last week, is House Bill thirty-one ninety-seven. There was a hearing yesterday. And this pertains to, we talked about this over the course of several legislative updates. This, this bill as originally proposed would limit clear and objective housing regulations, processes and procedures to lands within urban growth boundaries. It has since been identified and there's been significant mobilization by the building industry to oppose the original legislation. And now that, and, and I should back up, the, the original legislation was, was in response to a twenty seventeen decision by Luba and ultimately the Court of Appeals that found that clear and objective housing standards apply inside and outside urban growth boundaries, including on resource lands. So what the, what's happening now, there's a dash three amendment would limit the clear and objective standards to rural residential exception areas, unincorporated communities and non-resourced lands. Plan amendment zone changes. The, the concern that has been expressed amongst the county planning directors and to AOC is that this is an unfunded mandate as of, the legislation would, would provide counties a two-year grace period to update their codes to become clear and objective. The challenge for Deschutes County is that we have wildlife area combining zones. We have tentative plat provisions. And as I understand it, you need to have clear and objective standards. Washington County's been at this for seven years. They attempted to identify clear and objective criteria. It's easier said than done. They've been appealed. It's been appealed to Luba, remanded. Their Goal Five program is upside down. They have, they're spending a ton of resources with consultants. LCDC recently issued an enforcement order to incentivize them to try to update their codes, I believe, by late next year or the year following. This is challenging because I know on one hand, the board of county commissioners is really interested about housing. On the other hand, just as my noted in the email, this, to the extent this legislation gets passed, and I think there's a real possibility, we will need to update our codes. And, and the last comment I would make is because it affects wildlife area stand discretionary provisions, what's happened in Washington County is they have the conservationalist side of their community are unsatisfied with their, their attempts to establish clear and objective provisions. They believe it's weakened the wildlife protections, and so it's subject to yet litigation. And I think that's a foreshadowing of what we would see here. And so A, CDD doesn't have the, the budget right now. Of course, the board ultimately could direct us to drop every long-range planning project to focus on updating our codes. It's daunting. It would require significant resources, resources from legal counsel, and I think it will find itself in ongoing litigation for years. So I, that's the summary. That's the issue. That's the dynamic tension. On one hand, the building industry really wants clear and objective processes in the rural county and these, these, these specific areas. And on the other hand, it's, it's an unfunded directive that comes with significant uncertainty.
I see Doug has his hand up, but I just want to, I, I, I need to make two comments. One is it's not just wildlife. It would be flood plains. It could be wetlands. It could be. And it's not saying it would just automatically be allowed. It's just that there has to be clear and objective standards. So there's, there's a whole suite of areas that would, we'd have to develop clear and objective standards for. That's my first comment. The second comment is the board should be clearly aware and know that Deschutes County residents and/or attorneys or people that represent them here, such as Ken Katsrop, are the ones that are really, really advocating hard for the amendment to allow clear and objective, to, to require clear and objective standards in the rural county. I'm not taking a position on it. I just think that the board should know that people involved with Deschutes County Development are intimately involved in this.
Doug?
So Peter, I just want to be clear for me and for the board, the concern is with the dash three amendment. The, the concern is out with the underlying bill, is that correct? Because the dash three amendment is what requires clear and objective standards for a limited set of areas. Is that correct?
That's right.
Right, so the underlying bill was supported by the counties because it limits clear and objective standards just within the UGB. But the amendments would require clear and objective standards outside the UGB for certain provisions. And that's, that's the concern you're addressing, not with the underlying bill, but with the dash three amendment, which is sponsored by, the dash three amendment was introduced by the sponsor of the bill, Susan McLean, in, in response to requests from the development community.
Yeah, and, and, and there's some dynamic tension, just Washington County, which has been at this for seven years, is kind of begrudgingly supporting the proposed amendments because they're, they're, they're less burdensome, but I, I, I put it analogous to like the, the existing, the status quo without this legislation, the original legislation puts a thousand-pound weight on, on Oregon counties, especially the sophisticated counties like ours. What the proposed or dash three amendments do is they take, okay, they take two hundred pounds off, but it's a significant weight on the counties. It's a significant drag. It's an unfunded mandate. And it's, it's going to consume tremendous resources for years to come. And, and so is it, is it better than the status quo? I guess so, but not by much. And for counties like ours, and Nick's right, there are other aspects beyond wildlife that could come into play, and I mentioned competitive, our subdivision plat, our, it's not just the, the criteria for land use review, it's also the procedures. And, and Washington County, again, just, it, is it just a reminder of, you know, they, they've been at it for, for close to seven years and extensive resources and they're nowhere close to the finish line. So just bringing it to everyone's attention of what this bill represents for, for the department. And, and, and as I look at Kim, for some significant resources for legal counsel for trying to armor our, our amendments, if that's what we're going to have to do in a way that gives us the best fighting chance in the courts. Because I, I do think it'll be litigated extensively because of the changes that have to be made, as summarized.
Commissioner Chang, any thoughts?
I, I'm just curious to hear from people who are tracking this legislation, what the probability is that it's going to pass? Like, how much momentum does it have? Do you have a sense of that, Doug?
Well, Gabe sat through the hearing yesterday. There was limited testimony. They moved very quickly through it, and there was no, there was no, there was no work, work session. But the, the problem is that you've got the county, Washington County begrudgingly, which supported the bill, they had the bill drafted in the first place, begrudgingly supporting the dash three amendment and the sponsor of the bill introducing the amendment. So I would say that it probably is likely to move, but they haven't had the work session yet. So I think weighing in on the dash threes would be, would be valuable and maybe suggesting that if this is something, if Washington County wants the dash threes, that we ask them to apply the dash threes only to Washington County as sort of a test or a pilot project and not to burden the other counties, which are vastly, are facing vastly different circumstances with that type of administrative burden. That's just a concept or an idea, but that might be something the committee would be interested in.
So we were in a support position in the past, and now we're possibly in a support without amendments position. That's the problem, the amendments.
Exactly, take back the amendments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I am very concerned about how much staff capacity this could absorb, you know, particularly, you know, thinking about CDD's long-range planning capacity. We, we just got Senate Bill six forty-four passed. I would hate to see all the capacity of CD, CDD's long, long-range planning group taking up with this when what they should be doing is helping us get our, our rural ADU program up and running, for example. So I, yeah, I, I don't like the idea of this absorbing of a whole bunch of our capacity. And I don't like the idea of a whole lot of litigation following it.
And that litigation cycle is exactly the concept that would really be bad, because it could just be debated for the rest of time. So, yeah, so as I say, this bill that was mentioned, we had had a support position. What, what would be a good, good for the bill list right now? I mean, opposed because of amendments or? Yeah, some, some variation of something here.
Yeah, do we have an opposed, opposed unless amended category?
Yes, that's an option.
Yes. That, yeah. Unless, unless not amended.
There you go.
Yeah. We can work with staff and finesse it.
Yeah, and then Peter, if you can help us with a couple of statements that we might put in a letter if, if we want to plug in on that.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll, I'm with Doug's assistance. You know, obviously the, the subcommittee had their hearing yesterday, so if there's another hearing opportunity. I mean, Doug, my understanding is that the it was originally, so, sorry for the, for just consuming all this time. House Bill thirty-one ninety-seven originally went through a hearing. It passed through the hearing and went to the House. There was not support at the House, and then it moved to rules. And, and, and I think that was done, as I understand it, just to keep House Bill thirty-one ninety-seven on life support. So if it passes out of rules, Doug, doesn't it go back to the House floor for, for consideration? So I, I, I guess what I'm asking is there, is there still time to submit testimony?
There is still time to submit testimony because we can do that within twenty-four hours of the hearing, which is yesterday. So we've got, we have, we have until today at three o'clock to submit testimony and maybe something very short.
Okay.
Suggesting that, yeah, maybe something very short along the lines of what we just talked about. But I would certainly say, you know, you made a good point, Peter, earlier, and, and I think the commissioners echoed it, that what we don't want to see is a bill that's going to force us to divert all of our planning staff to fulfilling one responsibility and then not being able to do the things like Commissioner Chang and, and I think Commissioner DeBonne pointed out, which is focusing on the other housing issues and the ADU issues that, you know, point out, maybe in the letter that we just sent a bill six forty-four just passed, and we hope to be able to implement it very quickly, but this could take away all of our staff time. And I can communicate that to Representative McLean today, if that's, if that's the position the board takes this morning.
So how about a letter from our, you know, Peter, from you authorized at this meeting? So just, just laying out some of the topics. Commissioner Chang, do you support that? So just giving him the authority to, you know, lay out what it looks like from our community development director's point of view.
I'd support that. It looks like Uh, I'd support that. It looks like Commissioner Dair is, is, is on the, is on the, uh, call as well, if you wanna. Check with her.
I was looking for the list, yeah.
Um, Commissioner Adair, Angie's enabled, um, the ability to, to speak, I think, um. She's in the ten, the attendee panel of today's call.
Yeah, so I haven't seen it. Is she?
Like she's just coming over to panelist status.
Good morning, Commissioner Dare, if you're here. We're getting bounced around, I see attendees. So she's. She's trying to be here.
Have disconnected and is rejoining.
Okay, well, so as I say, the concept is a very business-like letter from the Community Development Director on this topic, explaining how it, uh, could. Really turn us upside down and, and our, uh, direction of how we proceed for planning. Maybe. So in the attendee, uh, area, Commissioner Dare, it looks like you're allowed to. Unmute yourself if you're.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I was trying to unmute myself and it wouldn't let me. That's right. Okay, yes, I, I've got service. Oh my gosh. And all the snow is gone. Compared to last Friday. Yeah, I can't believe it. It's like. Yeah, there is no snow over, uh, Hudo. So, um, yeah, I, I think if we can get that letter from Peter, I think that sounds like, uh, an excellent idea.
Okay, so yeah, so authorizing Community Development Director to, to publish a letter and, you know. Uh, CC that's on it, but just for the topics we've discussed.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Should we make that a vote?
I vote, so move.
Okay. And I see a nodding yes from Commissioner Chang, is that a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 There we go. Thank you. Very businesslike this morning. Uh, next topic.
Okay, transitioning on to page thirteen of this week's report, we have, uh. Bill from the District Attorney's Office that's still in draft status, um, we briefly discussed this a few weeks ago. And I believe, um, Doug, you were potentially gonna try and. See if there was any additional information that you could find out related to the Senate Bill five eighty-six, and I think potentially commissioners, we're gonna have a few other. Discussions, um, we don't have anyone from the DA's office on today's call, so I think I'm happy to. Move past this one and leave it in its current status unless anyone has any updates related to this bill. I'll go ahead and, and leave that there, um, for now.
Yeah, Whitney, I just, I just add that it, um, it's already passed the Senate on a very close vote, sixteen to twelve, it's been up for. Rule suspension on the calendar now for, um, a week. In the House and, uh, maybe up on the floor next week. That's the only update that I have for this morning.
Thank you. Um, transitioning over to finance on page fifteen of this week's report, I wanna turn it over to. Uh, CFO Robert Tintle and Treasurer Bill Kuhn, who I believe have. Um, some additional information and updates related to House Bill twenty-nine eighty, which is still in draft pending status. Um, on this week's report. So Robert or Bill?
I'll go ahead and, uh, start Bill and then, uh, I'll, Bill can fill in all the pieces that I, uh, might have missed. Uh, we both met with Bill Van Vliet, uh, the Executive Director of the Network for the Organ, Affordable Housing over this bill. Uh, previously, this group has met with the assessors group, the, uh, County Treasurer, State County Treasurer's Group as well. Tax collectors, you got feedback to change for the original version of it. What this bill is, it authorizes cities and counties to adopt a program. For awarding grants to developers of affordable housing and moderate income housing projects to finance certain costs. Associated with that, those housing costs. Essentially, they're trying to provide. Middle income housing, uh, for those not greater than a hundred and twenty percent of the median income. Uh, what this does, it, it's requesting three hundred million dollars from the Oregon, uh, Business Development. Uh, Department to fund a revolving loan program. They'll provide. Interest-free loans to the county, essentially ten years, zero interest. Uh, and then the county will develop a program to provide grants to developers. Um, for that. How it's paid back essentially is through tax increment financing, where the difference in the, uh, the development. That, those funds would actually get transferred as a fee to the Oregon Business Department. Then they would, um. Uh, those funds would be used to pay back the loan, but also the funds would go through, back to the Oregon Development Business Department. Uh, because they will. Not reduce the taxes to the fire districts. That's one of the points of this measure is. The fire districts that were going to oppose this bill unless they were held harmless from the tax increment financing. So, so that's a little take in it that administratively, uh, it worked through, that it worked a little easier for this, but the board would have to adopt the program. And the county would have to set up and administering the program, uh, but then O B D D would end up. Approving the loans and they would send the county information on how much we need to withhold and forward and such. Um, and I'll turn it over to Bill, if you can, if you want to fill in a bunch of the pieces, I might have missed on that as well.
Yeah, no, it's still, I would say, a work in process, I, you know, I'll take my treasurer's hat off for a minute and step back into my former banker role. Like, one of the significant issues facing housing availability in the area of workforce housing. Which, as Robert identified, is that area of eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Which doesn't have a lot of potential funding sources. And, um, many of these proposed, uh, residential housing projects will not be funded right now, due to an extremely wide gap. In, uh, between total project cost and projected net income on the project, so it just isn't financially feasible for a lot of these projects to get off the ground. Um, obviously, many municipalities recognize that city mandated development costs are one of the significant. Impediments to project viability, but they don't have the Development Department funding sources to waive those requirements, so it's kind of a, it is a catch twenty-two. Um, I think, uh, the, uh, the premise is, this is tax. It is tip funding and, uh, you know, the, the, the focus is creating this revolving fund that will be administered by the Oregon Department. Uh, Business Development Department, that the municipalities, if they choose to opt into this program, and I think that's really important to note. Um, is that will then provide them with a funding source to basically cover. Uh, these development costs and also I believe some of the vertical construction costs to make these projects viable. Um, the offset is, obviously, we don't have the benefit of those, of those increased tax revenues, uh, for a period of ten. Years, but they are attempting to make our districts whole, which I think is really important. And, uh, yeah, in my mind, it, th- this one in my mind has some merit. I, I understand they've gone through some modifications. Um, they're attempting to solve a real world problem that exists out there right now. Really in the area of workforce housing, uh, which is completely different than the affordable housing spectrum of up to eighty percent A M I. Whereas there, there's a number of nonprofit organizations and significant grant funding available to help support those projects. So, um, you know, the mechanics behind the program, uh, how it's implemented, um, we as a, a, a taxing authority would. Would need to track, uh, you know, basically build out the matrices on, on these individual projects. Uh, in terms of what the, uh, the tax assessment will be, what that deferral will look like. And then we've got to collect the annual fee from the developer, which we then pass on to Oregon Business Development Department. So there's a mechanism here, there will be some additional administrative costs involved, um. What I, again, I go back to the fact of, you know, how many of these projects simply won't get off the ground? Without this type of funding source, and that's where I think this project does, or this proposal does have some merit. But, um, again, it's not perfect, but it appears to be moving in the right direction, um. For, uh, for the record, I know Bill Van Vliet well, uh, the Executive Director for NOAA. I've worked with him in my prior world on a number of affordable housing projects and, uh. And they've been a, a tremendous resource for long-term funding for these projects, so. Um, I think we've got, we've got some of the right players behind this legislation, um. And, um, I, I am generally in support of, of, of seeing what, what can materialize with this legislation, so. Um, I'll stop there and I guess open it up for any questions. Robert, did I cover everything there?
Just one last piece, there is a one percent admin fee that the county would be able to retain. Um, to administer this program, because it will be a program that does place, uh, somewhat of an administrative burden. Um, on the county, but there's that fee to help cover those small portion of the cost.
So, uh, back to the beginning, this is gonna be, uh. Grants for eight, uh, up to a hundred and twenty A M I. For system development charges, is that what this is?
I'm primarily in, in that regard, but I believe, and again, I've, I've gone back and looked through the proposed legislation and it doesn't state. Uh, what it states is that the developer can't borrow more than a hundred percent of total development cost. Now, whether or not that is restricted to actual. Um, city or municipality, uh, mandated costs or total, including the vertical construction cost.
The bill, the bill does state, um, system development charges, pre-development costs, construction costs, site-specific infrastructure. And land write-downs, um, it's in the definition section of eligible costs.
Doug?
Yeah, thanks, um, just a couple of questions, I, I read through the bill a couple of weeks ago when this first came up and was just reading through it again. Uh, I think that the bill is optional for counties, right? So the county would opt into the program. It's not a mandate, is that correct? Okay. And then the second thing is, at the beginning of the bill, it does set up, um. Uh, section three on page two, lines forty. Sponsoring jurisdiction that adopts a grant program shall prescribe an application process, including the forms and deadlines. And then there are some. So it, it appears that the county can tailor the program a little bit to its liking. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Well, this is definitely the same area that they were talking about, the Housing Trust Fund, uh, Sherry Health had come to us, and we're just looking at this kind of world of how do we help? With a, uh, you know, some amount to focus on eighty to a hundred and twenty A M I. Commissioner Chang, any thoughts?
Uh, I guess I'd say, uh. At the high level, this sounds good, you know, um. Providing investment for missing middle housing, something that we're, we're very interested in here. I, I, I like that it's opt-in, uh, I could imagine, um. Uh, I, you know, cities with a whole infrastructure around housing developments, like. The city of Bend and to some extent the city of Redmond, being able to take advantage of this. Uh, more easily than we could, uh, I, I guess my. The, 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 the thing that's nagging at me about this is it, it just seems like a very convoluted way. To move money from the state to, uh, to, to builders and developers' hands. Uh, and I, like, I, on, on the one hand, you know, making this available to local governments. Uh, through a revolving loan program gives us more kind of control and. Um, influence and, and kind of we can design programs would, you know, but. With a unique local flavor, but at the, on the other hand, it, it, you know, it just kind of makes us a middleman in a. In a multi, like a, you know, a, a multi-party process with a, a lot of transaction costs, so I, I'm. Uh, you know, that's, that, that's the only thing that's kind of bugging me about this.
Commissioner Dare, are you following that?
Yes, I'm still following it, um, I, I would like to support it. Um, one percent to the county, sounds. Like one percent, sounds fine. So, yes, we need that housing, we need it desperately. The eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, so I, and the fact that it's not mandatory, I think sounds excellent, so. Please proceed ahead.
There's some motivation. So, uh, my thought was to, uh, put it at a two monitor possibly, because we. You know, uh, it sounds like just, you know, cities and counties would be a little bit different, Commissioner Dare is very supportive, uh, first hearing it. Uh, Cheyenne, uh, she have your hand raised?
Yeah, thank you. These programs are, are modeled after existing programs that are quite effective, and I think it does allow for, to your point, Commissioner Chang, it does allow for local. Excuse me, control. And I think that's an effective way to ensure that we're able to prioritize and. Oversee the work of affordable housing developers and encourage the development we want to see. One recommendation I might make for your consideration would be. One, to clearly outline the, the, you know, we feel comfortable that one percent is enough for us to oversee that program. Uh, you know, administratively, and then also consider removing the affordability floor. I think it's appropriate to have a ceiling at one twenty. What, what is true often about affordable housing projects is that we think of them. As Bill mentioned, as two separate types of projects. You know, supportive housing or low-income housing is still affordable housing. And we often refer to eighty to one twenty as workforce, but there are many people who fall into the thirty and fifty percent. Affordability or A M I that are still workforce, and so I would encourage that if the intent is to address true workforce needs. That we remove the floor, the affordability floor, to produce all range of housing options.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and I, I had already thought about that, I mean, I, I've referred to a one twenty as a top and already know and not. That there's no need to refer to a floor there, so I guess I'm already thinking like that. Remember, we're talking about tax increment financing, so this is foregoing other tax revenue that would come online. To monitor this program, so it isn't like the money's coming from somewhere else, it's the local dollars that. Would, uh, you know, bend the curve down for the in. Increase of tax revenue. At Deschutes County, you know, if we were participating, so just acknowledging it sounds like that's what we're talking about. Commissioner Chang, any thoughts on the position?
Yeah, I mean, uh. What, what makes this sound different than other taxing, coming financing? Um, in- initiatives or, or efforts that, that I'm familiar with is. Is that they're front-loading the money, um. You know, in, instead of having to, you know, kind of. Get the increment one year, get the increment another year, get the nut increment another year before you have anything to work with. That they're, they're saying they're gonna, they're gonna roll out three hundred million dollars for us to, to, to do something right away, which is. I mean, it sounds like, that sounds way better than. The guy to tax increment financing that, um, that we've seen around the region in, in recent years.
So you, uh, you wanna take a supportive position? I'm taking neutral myself, but Commissioner Dare, ready to go?
I, I, I saw Robert's hand go up for a moment, I, I'm wondering if he has, uh, uh, any, any thoughts on kind of. From a, 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 a financial management perspective? I, I, I do have to say, I don't think ten, I, I don't think one percent is very much. Um, so I, I'm, I'm skeptical that that actually covers our costs to administer something like this, but.
I, I was gonna add that, uh, that the language in the bill says the middle income housing is defined by O R S one nine seven seven five eight. Up to a hundred and twenty percent, uh, so I was just trying to see if one nine seven dot seven five eight lists that. Talks about middle housing, but I didn't see the floor. Um, but one other piece that was on this that we asked about was, well, what happens if we give this. Uh, loan out and the developer is supposed to pay a fee back, then, uh, what if there? Then, uh, what if there, there, there aren't funds available? And, cause we're giving out a grant, the county's responsible to pay back OBDD. Uh, what happens then? And they said, well, we need to work out those rules still, but it seems like OBDD would take over the liability at that point in time. Uh, it, you know, it wasn't exact comfort there, but that's how it's supposed to work, uh, there too. And, and yes, um, all tax increment financing for the initial term does take away county from all the district, all takeaway funding from all the districts, including ourselves during that period of time. But as we know, the goal is after ten years, that's when, you know, the districts get, get, see the full realization of all the taxes.
And there's, and there's the argument that without this, without this funding being available, these projects wouldn't get built anyway, and there wouldn't be an increment. I, I guess I'm, 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 I'm talking myself into support.
That's fine, yeah, so as, as I say, this is legislative item, this, uh, we can get there. So it sounds like there's two Commissioners who are, uh, support, uh, priority two at this time. Uh, Bill Kuhn, did you wanna jump back in?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, maybe answer, uh, you know, Phil, your comment earlier about the, the program structure and why is the Oregon Business Development Department involved in this? Um, and I asked that question directly to Bill and, and basically they're doing it that way because Oregon Business Development Department already has an infrastructure financing program for municipalities. So they felt like this would be the best bet in terms of administering the program and getting the funding back out to, you know, various entities that, that opt into the program. And, uh, you know, Cheyenne, your, your comment earlier about maybe dropping that lower limit of the, of the workforce housing, eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. I think, um, the issue is that these are gonna be for-profit developers that will be opting into this program or taking advantage of it. And the, um, I, I'm not sure if the financial viability is going to be there if you drop much lower in that AMI strata. If, uh, you know, just from a, you know, what they're able to charge in terms of rents to make these projects viable. So I think there's some, they're, they're trying to, you know, kind of manage that, that middle, uh, middle, middle housing, um, opportunity there to, uh, to make a program viable that will also work for, uh, for, for-profit developers.
I, I sort of agree, and there are many nonprofit providers who don't need to take a profit and don't pay taxes, um, because of their structure. And locally, the, the most effective model for producing affordable housing that actually targets local individuals is through a nonprofit model. Um, and so I think there's an opportunity to partner across sectors. Um, if we remove that floor or if there is no floor and we don't specify that it is necessarily workforce housing, um, which is sometimes a misnomer, we can encourage more local capacity building from the nonprofit community to step up into development roles. Um, we see that as a very effective strategy in larger communities, and our community is sort of, uh, growing that capacity right now. I think it, it would only provide even more flexibility for the county to come to the table as a partner with nonprofits who don't need to take that profit margin. And so they're able to structure their deals differently, um, combining and braiding project funding, uh, to make, uh, substantial, uh, I would say investments in our affordable housing range. Um, one of the challenges that we're seeing is that when we talk about affordable housing, there's not a lot of clarity about what that actually means and how it's restricted. And also not a lot of clarity about who it's restricted for. For instance, affordable housing projects, um, may be available for any person anywhere, not necessarily our local population, whereas coordinated entry referrals are one of the only legal ways to restrict to our geographic local population. Um, so they think there's a, a benefit locally for us to look at homelessness as, you know, part, part of homelessness is an affordable housing issue. And if we can address both by not siloing them, I think there's an effect of just putting more tools in the toolkit for policymakers and developers, uh, to be able to conceive of projects that really address the issues we're facing.
Well, uh, so we are taking a, a, a support position and Representative Krupps had joined us and thanks for listening in on this, if you've been able to. Uh, we can switch gears here a little bit. Um, is, uh, so real quick, uh, Whitney, is there anything else in the bill list?
Oh, that's it for this week.
Oh, good, okay. So, yeah, let's go right to, thanks for joining us, Representative Krupps. Uh, if you wanna, uh, share with anything or if we have any questions for him.
Yeah, no, um, good morning, everybody, nice to everybody. Yeah, we're on, I think we're in this time of the session where we're sort of waiting for the May forecast. You know, we've, um, this ongoing process of prioritizing, um, budget asks, um, you know, we have a process where we're supposed to sort of prioritize different asks as legislators, um, both as the committee chairs and as individual members, you know, the, myself, Rep, uh, Le- Levy and Rep Canoe sort of coordinated on that to make sure we were highlighting different local ask that we were all supportive of, you know, Representative Canoe had the courthouse on his list, and because it was on his list, I, I put the Hawthorne Bridge on my list and we sort of did that, did that to make sure we sort of cover the different priorities without sort of duplication. Um, but I think everybody's sort of waiting for that May forecast to see what the budget's gonna be. Um, we'll tell you in the last week, we've been having uh, hearings about the large-scale transportation infrastructure projects that are slated for two oh five and I five, the I five bridge. Um, I feel like those conversations, though, don't, I mean, have an impact, you know, the I five bridge has an economic impact over all parts of Oregon. It's not something we frequently talk about in Bend, but how that does get funded or doesn't get funded does have an impact on the rest of the transportation budget and projects that we would see in Central Oregon, so, um, I don't know, that is an interesting and incredibly complicated conversation that we're all sort of keeping our eyes on, but, um, so I feel like that's kind of where we are in, in session right now, that, that, you know, slightly shifting gears to that, to that budget, to that budget phase.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you very much. Uh, I know that, yeah, a big bridge across the river could take kind of, uh, all the air out of the room or all the funds out of the, the bank or whatever.
It can take a lot.
Yeah, that's.
Yes, it's, uh, the price tag is, um, yeah, pretty significant. Um, and I think, uh, is Doug still on the call? Yeah, Doug, we, we got the, I'm trying to remember, we, the ADU bill got off the floor, right? It got out of, yeah, good. We got that through committee and off the floor, so, um, should have an impact here in, in Central Oregon. Um,
Yeah, it's on, on the way to the governor's desk and, and I talked to her staff yesterday. She wasn't familiar with the bill, but, um, promised to take a look at it and didn't imagine that there'd be any, any concerns at the governor's office. She likes the idea of additional options for housings and ADUs were something that the, as Speaker, uh, the governor helped shepherd through, so he's very supportive of that.
And I, Doug, I appreciate your work on that. It was helpful to be able to touch base with you on that through the process.
No, thanks, I, I thought it was a good team effort, uh, really appreciate the delegation and, and your assistance. Uh, you know, there was some controversy from time to time, but, uh, it flew through unanimously on the, on the House floor, which we're very happy about. And, uh, so at the end of the day, it's also very happy we're, we're getting it to the governor before, uh, before the last few weeks of the session. It's always good to try to avoid those last five or six weeks.
Cool.
Uh, so just to advocacy for the courthouse, uh, we're, we're looking at, um, the big picture, general fund, structural, uh, budgeting of Deschutes County. We had a great work session this last Monday and, uh, uh, it is gonna be real critical, any resources for that courthouse, just because, uh, that's gonna fully offset debt, uh, for, for, so, for Deschutes County's general fund in the next twenty years, you know? So just, just so you know, I mean, it's very structural to our budget, just cause it's, you know, uh, a big capital for us, and it may be relatively small for the state, so we'll see, you know, uh, I'm thinking five and ten million dollar increments and we've asked for twenty-five. But as I say, it's very tangible to a, a debt play and it's gonna matter for the next twenty years.
No, I, I can, uh, well, I mean, we, I can appreciate it, right? We're a growing community and that courthouse is the new judges in the courthouse is symbolic of, um, uh, sort of piece of, you know, sort of social infrastructure that we had fallen behind on.
Well, and then, yeah, Wednesday, we had a great update from our architects, uh, uh, project people. Uh, it's coming around, you know, one way or another, it's gonna be built, it's gonna be, uh, premiere, and it's gonna be on, uh, on schedule for a start. We'll see what the end looks like, but I mean, it's coming, it's gonna be exciting to get it built.
What, what is the official start date?
Uh, like, beginning of next year, a year from now.
The only thing I don't know, and I think the bill that we passed out of committee about allowing state bonding for expansion and remodel as opposed to just new construction, I mean, I, I know, I'm not sure if we would, that bill in theory would help, I'm not sure if that would just make us late.
Well, same. We've always been in this kind of awkward spot where since our facilities aren't a disaster, there's, there's no, you know, big, big, uh, state rebuild coming on the horizon. And since we're generally a growing county with resources, we haven't qualified for other resources. So we're just in this awkward spot where we need to spend a bunch of money, but we don't quite qualify in the priorities relative to other needs.
I get that, I mean, and I will, I will say, sort of digging in with my interim colleagues, we are in a better spot than some of the, those really small counties with courthouses that need to be replaced and they just don't have, they don't have any of the resources to contemplate what we're contemplating.
Yeah, good. Well, uh, so it's nine o'clock, if you have anything else, we can look for anything else around the table here.
Um, can I just make one comment? Um, I just wanna remind the audience that Clackamas County did get ninety-four point five million. So, um, asking for twenty-five for Deschutes County, I think is incredibly appropriate. Everyone have a lovely weekend.
Yeah, Patty, I, Patty owe you a phone call, so I'll try to check you down this weekend.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Hey. Is there anything else for this meeting?
Commissioner Devon, I would just note first off, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Um, just noting, we cancel the first Friday meetings due to AOC conflict, so there will be no meeting next week.
Next week, okay. Very good, so, yeah, and then no board meeting Wednesday, so the only other time Deschutes County Board of Commissioners is gonna meet next week is Monday afternoon, so if there's any legislative topics that come up quick, let's make sure to fit them in Monday. Okay, with that, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.